Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Rockland School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, February 12th, 2018. First on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
I would only question, Tom, you weren't here.
Right.
How can you make a motion to approve?
I can make a motion to approve, I just can't vote on them.
Oh, okay, alright, fine.
I abstain from the vote.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
So, all those in favor? That is a vote, thank you very much. Next up, under Audience, from Rogers Middle School, we have Ramsey Youssef, in Project 351.
Yes, I'd like to invite Principal Bond to the podium.
Good evening, everybody, I'm thrilled to have Ramsey Youssef with me today. He is our Project 351 representative, was it last week or the week before? The week before, he traveled to Boston for some community service learning activities that I'm sure he's going to tell you about. Let me just tell you a little bit about Ramsey. Ramsey is the real deal. I've said that before about other kids, and he is exactly as great as some other kids we've brought up here. He's a member of our National Junior Honors Society, I just took a quick look at his report card, he has a straight A, not A minus. Straight A for his grades, excellent in conduct consistently for four years here at the Rogers Middle School, no lower than a B plus from fifth grade, and that happened once. Beside that, all As, and that is not easy to do because, as you know, our rigor is way, way up there. He plays basketball for the Travel League, right, in Rockland, and he's a soccer player, and he's a soccer player, too, and he's a well-rounded young man who is going to do well with every single thing that he chooses to do, so Ramsey Youssef. Do you have any questions, or anything you'd like to ask of him? Go right ahead.
Tell us about the program.
When I went into Boston, we went to different places. My group went to the State House, and we did service for Y2Y, which is a homeless shelter for young adults. And then we did a project with the Hope and Comfort, which they make hygiene kits for homeless young adults. And then we also worked with Lauren Baker and talked to her about her organization, the Wonder Fund, which helps kids in the State Department who have been taken from their homes and need to be relocated.
I have two questions. First question is, who dared give you the B plus after fifth grade? That was quite an impressive introduction, Ms. Bond. Congratulations to you on taking part in this program, it's a really great one, and I just want to hear how it impacted you, what impression it left upon you after you were done with it, and if it kind of opened any doors for your future.
It really inspired me to help people, because before this, I haven't really done much service, and going and seeing the people who started these programs, it kind of shows you that there's ordinary people who want to make a difference.
Outstanding. Any other questions from the committee, comments?
Who's the 351 staff?
It's the 351 cities and towns.
Cities and towns, right.
So, you met an individual from each one of those cities and towns?
Not everyone, but...
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Was it an all-day program? Great, great. You're going to play in that basketball fundraiser that they have coming up, are you?
Hopefully.
Good. Be nice to your principal.
I agree.
I just want to say, thank you for your participation in that. We need to be the change that we want to see in the world, and so giving back to your community is one of the most influential things that you can do, so kudos to you for doing that, and for being that example for your peers, it's really important, so thank you.
What's your future plan?
When I go to college, I hope to become an engineer, or something in that field.
An engineer? Okay. So, I have lots of friends that are engineers, I lived on an engineering floor in college, so if you need any advice, you want to speak to people that are engineers, anything like that, you come and talk to me.
You're going to stay local, or, you don't know yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Just put out all those applications.
He just looks like a senior.
He looks like a senior. He has the record of a senior.
We have four more years.
We've got time to keep them.
Nope, some people play.
Hats off to you. The academic part of it, obviously, speaks for itself, the involvement with sports, and now doing this and wanting to make a difference, you're doing a great job. Also, Mom and Dad, great job. We need more of you guys, raising more of them, so, great job.
Rockland kids continue to make us proud. Mr. Youssef, congratulations, thanks for being here with us tonight, and keep up the good work.
Neat.
Awesome, thank you, good job.
Do I have a certificate? We have an official certificate presentation, here we go. You are awarded this certificate for participating in the Community Service Project 351, on the 12th day of February, 2018. Why don't we turn this around, you can hold it, and we'll shake hands, and we can look at the camera, watch, watch this.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Next, under Audience, an almost equally esteemed individual we have with us tonight,
our old friend, Mr. Bob Mahoney, from the South Shore VOTEC, is here to give us an update. Mr. Mahoney?
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me here. As you see, you've got your late Christmas presents there in front of you, from the school itself, but I just want to give an update, I have some numbers here, that right now, there are currently 147 students in the building, from Rockland, 9 through 12. We have received 82 applications for the 2018-2019, there are 80 kids looking to join in the ninth grade, and two are looking to go sophomore or above. As of right now, we still have, just a notification, the top 20 students will be notified sometime this week, so if you didn't get notified this week, it's not all over, this is just the first round of things that went out there for acceptances. They send out quotas, and so as each one comes back, then they know how many to send out for each quota, the allowed students back in for the freshman grade. So, that's some of the things that have been going on. Two new programs that started this year are horticulture and plumbing, both have been taking off, the acceptance from the students has been great, where they've signed up for it, it's part of their electives, it's where they get their choices of shops, and we're very happy and pleased about those two programs that have been going on. So, we've had a great student council, people there from Rockland have donated to the Rockland Food Pantry, but that's about it, that's about it, so I just wanted to come in and just give you the update on the numbers, and what's going on, and how the two programs are going, and see if you guys have any questions or concerns.
Bobby, how big is your freshman class, ultimately? What do you think you'll have?
The biggest, this year's freshman class is the biggest that they've had in a while. I'd be, I know it's over 120.
So, you must go to all the towns, and you accept the first 20, and then you see what their plans are, and then you go down?
It goes by the formula that they have, which is the big question, and always in the past, it goes by, just not all academics. It's academics, it's attendance, it's attitude, it's discipline, those all things come into it, and how they score that through the Guidance Department. I know the Guidance Department, Amy does a great job, she's been in communication with the ones over at the middle school, and working very closely with them. Last year, we had a couple people called up and wanted to know why their children weren't accepted, and they were good students, or whatever, but when they had medical issues, they weren't given excused, or they had to have doctor's notes for them, and they never provided those, but that comes off of their attendance, so it didn't come to be a good thing, so this year here, we sent out a notice with the packet that says, make sure you check your child's attendance.
I probably should have realized, but I never knew that you could apply as a sophomore, or as a junior, or as a senior.
Certain shops, Mr. Phelps, take in those additional kids that come in, because, as you know, some kids leave after the freshman year, or in the middle of their freshman year, it's not what they wanted, so it opened up a couple spots, so that's how they're able to come in and do that. I know Dr. Hickey's been in, while talking to Dr. Cron, but...
Yeah, I'm sure, no, I just realized.
The communication's really improved, I think, between the two things, so I think things are going well.
Any other comments, questions from the committee? Just a couple from me, Mr. Mahoney. First of all, thank you for the cards, that's awesome. That's a nice little...
There was Dr. Hickey as well.
Yeah, thank you for Dr. Hickey, and thank you for the kids in the print shop for doing that. And dovetailing what you just mentioned about communication, since Mr. Mahoney's been our representative to the school committee over at VOTEC, the communication between us and the VOTEC has improved great, greatly, I should say. We've had a couple of opportunities to sit down with Dr. Hickey, and Dr. Cron, and myself, and Mr. Mahoney, and we've made some progress in that area of communication, I think. A couple of questions I do have, is the new online registration that you guys have, how has that impacted applications? Have you seen a lot more of them? How's that working out for you?
It's a great question, thank you for asking that. That has helped out a lot, but we really got a lot at our open house, because at the open house, they were able to fill out the application right there online, and they were actually able to do some of the interviews while they're there, at the same time for the open houses. But, no, that's been helping out a great lot, a great deal.
Awesome.
As far as the communication goes, it just helps the flow and return responses there.
Well, I'll tell you, it's really cut down on my sleep at night, because the online registration process, and not to contradict you, because there may have been 80 folks, or 82, you said?
Yeah.
Who began the online process, but to date, there have been 58 actually completed applications that are turned in.
Right.
So, the 80 number sends me into stroke mode, and we're really, because for us, it's, enrollment's a very, very big deal. So, we've been working very closely with the Guidance Department, and I just want to make sure that the kids who want to go to the VoC have the opportunity to go.
Right.
Yeah, that's my primary...
So, that was my next question, to kind of get a little bit more specific about that last comment that you just made.
These are just the numbers that were taken in from the applications that we have received, and that's not the exact number, there's ones that have withdrawn, or whatever, but those are the numbers that we have.
So, my question is more about, you have 20 acceptances, the first 20 that you take in, right? So, a lot of those kids, so let's say the kids that test in, or they get scored on whatever the metric is that you guys use for acceptance, a lot of those kids that may be at the top of that level, might be college-bound kids at other high schools, might be kids that might be successful going off to a secondary education after high school, things like that. My concern is for the kids that aren't getting accepted, the kids that vocational education trade for them might be the only thing, that is an only option for them, right? So, there is probably a large group of kids that might not be getting in, that may be sort of missing out on that vocational education, that they may really depend on later in life. So, my question is, is there any mechanism by which a kid like that, that there might be some consideration given to a kid like that beyond your normal acceptance numbers?
There are considerations, Amy downed from the Guidance handles like the majority of this, so like, I'm saying I'm maybe 80% positive in what the facts I'm going to throw out. It's not always the top end, it's not just strictly academics, it goes by, you know, what it is, their attendance, their attitude, doesn't matter what the grade level is. The grades are one portion, the attendance is one portion, you know, the discipline is one portion, and that's how they come up with these numbers, and that's what it is. So, sometimes you could end up with an honest student that's missed a few days, but that would drop his score down, but his, you know, his attitude and everything brings it down, or you could have a B student, or a C student, that is there every day, that goes to school every day, just not the academic, but the academic grade will be at one level, but the attendance and the attitude will be higher, so that's how they bring that in.
Got it.
Do they have a, excuse me, do they have a question, do they have an affinity, say if a student has an affinity to a particular, you know, vocation, they want to become a plumber, or a carpenter, or stuff like that, is that reflected in, how is that reflected?
They don't, when they come in as freshmen, they go into a series of shops.
Okay.
Okay, they don't just go into their one shop right away as a freshman.
Okay.
They go into this exploratory, where they go into eight shops, where they go in every other week to explain, and then after that particular point in time is finished, then they get to go in and put down a list of three, of what they like.
Okay.
And then four, or whatever it may be, and that there. Sometimes we have some kids that leave, because they don't get what they wanted.
Okay.
So, and those don't take place till usually by the time, middle of January, I think after Christmas break, is when they start going into what their dedicated shops may be.
Okay, so they do have an occasion to visit everything, and experience each one of the different shops that they have?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, they have a list of what they would like to do, and then Guidance puts them in different things, you know, they could go into, they can go from automotive, to cooking, to, you know, different other ones, electrical, and they just go shopping around the machine shop, and horticulture, and plumbing, and different ones.
Oh, okay.
And then they get to take their pick of, someone may want to win the air and say, hey, I want engineering, or I want, and next you know, they go, geez, I really like automotive.
Right, okay.
I really like carpentry, you know, it's...
So, they're not keep pigeonholed into any particular thing, did they have the chance to experience all the different...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, that's true.
That's during the exploratory process, that starts from September to January.
Oh, good, thank you. Phelps?
Just curious, Bobby, what's the breakdown, boys to girls? Is it about a 50/50 enrollment, or are there more boys and girls?
It's pretty close to the 50/50 number, to be honest with you, because it's, you know...
The different programs.
We have the different programs now, there's engineering, there's computers, there's CIT, there's computers, you know, technology, then there's cosmetology, then there's culinary, so it's pretty close to that number. If I'd known you were asking that, I would have had the answer for you.
No, mine's close.
I will find out and text it to you. I will find out and text that to you. But, just remember, you know, a lot of the sending towns, and Dr. Cron's got the numbers from Dr. Hickey about the assessments and things like that there, Rockland's always around the highest, because we're a blue collar town, and their situat numbers are down lower, so each town has a quota that they're allowed. If you don't use that, then it gets distributed amongst the other towns that have.
Okay.
And that's how it is.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Mahoney? Very good, well, Mr. Mahoney, as always, thank you so much.
Always a pleasure, thank you very much.
We enjoy having the opportunity to have you come before.
Yeah, listen, it's like I said, you guys, Mr. Biggins has my number, and Phelps will have my number soon, as soon as I get that information for him.
Great.
I'll find out, and I will text it to him, and like I said, if anybody has any questions, concerns, or, you know, I can have, if I don't know it, I will find out, and have the powers that be either get back to you my...
And thank you for the cards, and thank you for putting Dr. Cron's telephone number on it, so he can answer.
Well, I didn't have permission from Mr. Biggins to put everybody's telephone number on it, so he just says, why don't we put the school one on there? I said, okay, whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
But, thank you very much for having me this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney, have a great night. Okay, next on tonight's agenda, item three is our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Cron?
Thank you. Just building project update, just a couple things that have happened, the elementary building project, we had to submit our, had to submit our request for services, to hire an owner's project manager, and that was completed, and we are now, February 14th is our final drop dead date for all the companies who want to apply. So far, I believe we've received 20, 20, 25 applications, so this Thursday, the Subcommittee of the Building Committee will be...
Just requests?
Just requests.
Requests for the art dress, Wednesday will be the date of sending them.
Right, so Thursday, when we complete, we will be going through each one of those packets, and trying to whittle ourselves down to three of the top candidates. And Colleen and I attended pro-pay training, along with Mary Jane Martin from Town Hall, so the three of us went through pro-pay training, and that's essentially the software system that they use on the state level to, for us to submit costs for reimbursement, so that was very helpful. Again, MSBA continues to be an incredibly impressive organization, and just great to work with, so again, we're moving right along, and hoping that we can continue meeting our deadlines, we're aiming for April 2nd. And the rest of my Superintendent's Report, I would like to turn over to a video that was recently created by students at Rockland High School, and this video is intended to be, I want to say a marketing, sort of a marketing tool, so that people get a sense of what it's like to be at Rockland High School, and I'm just so impressed with it, I just thought that we could watch it. Dave, can we turn down the lights a little bit, or no? Yeah, awesome. Completely student-created.
He's still on his feet, and he's going to go all the way for the touchdown. He's into the touchdown.
Rockland is an economically diverse residential community of approximately 17,000 people, located 15 miles southeast of Boston, and close to the coast, but you knew that.
Currently, there are 586 students enrolled at Rockland High School, in grade nine through five. In 2013, Rockland completed an $85 million building project, providing Rockland students with state-of-the-art computer labs, small and large performance spaces, modern science labs, as well as an impressive radio, television studio.
In addition, Rockland High School provides students with a modern woodshop, a dedicated robotics laboratory, and state-of-the-art classrooms that include a darkroom and water channel. Rockland High School is accredited by the New England Association of Secondary Schools and Colleges. It is an academically rigorous, college-preparatory, public secondary school.
Rockland High School is prepared to take you on a journey of discovery. We will help you explore your options for a bright future in the 21st century economy, and investigate the ways in which you can contribute and thrive in our fast-changing, media-rich society.
Want to see what your future can look like? Start with a look at Rockland High. Rockland High School offers a rich assortment of classes. Here's a quick look at each department's offerings.
The English Department provides RHS students with basic through advanced coursework in literature and composition. Students can also choose from a variety of electives, or participate in a number of extra and co-curricular activities, including the Shakespeare Festival, poetry aloud, the award-winning RHS newspaper, the Veritas, the digital magazine Images, and the annual Sullivan Orthorical Contest, which awarded $4,000 in scholarships to the last year's winners.
What can we say about math at RHS? More than you may expect. Students take a minimum of three years of math. You will find the department uses technology to support the curriculum, with everything from Rockland calculators to a program called Stat Crunch. And for those of you who are number crunchers, the math team represents RHS at four competitions a year, facing off against mathies from surrounding communities. If you don't know how rude-squeamed late to math, join the Ubers Club and find out. Students at RHS take three years of history, including two years of US history. They can also choose from electives that include popular culture, history and film, and American conspiracies. A field trip to the Freedom Trail, the Mock Trial Club, and Harvard Model Congress all present students with the kind of hands-on experiences that broaden the mind and helps students better understand their country and its history.
The Science Department provides three years of laboratory, hands-on courses.
There are also a number of popular electives, including robotics, engineering, computer science, and for those with stronger stomachs, forensics.
Our computer science program is growing, and next year, Advanced Computer Science will be available for students who would like to receive college credit while in high school.
Our robotics team placed fourth in the Sea Purge competition sponsored by the US Navy last year at UMass Lowell. The department is well-equipped, well-staffed, eager to help you better understand the universe around you.
A wide range of electives offer bollocks that are ability to explore interests, new ideas, and hands-on work.
Courses range from cooking and construction, through digital media production, to the producer of this video. The physical education and health departments help students learn healthy habits that will last a lifetime, and help them understand the important links between physical fitness and mental and emotional well-being.
The extensive lineup of our courses is designed to offer something for every student, from the basic foundations part, through studio and AP art, as well as 3D course offers.
Students can paint, draw, design, and create clothing or pottery, or take a shot at comic book illustration.
The Music Department plays a strong role at Life at RHS, providing students with the opportunity to explore various music styles, and the role of music in our culture. Students can hone their voices in chorus, play in concert band, with performance a number of concerts during the school year.
Or learn about and perform pieces of America's major contributions to the world of music, jazz.
The Music Department is also responsible for selecting and staging the annual RHS three musicals. Students can participate onstage or by providing backstage or technical support in our state-of-the-art auditorium.
As the world grows smaller, the economy becomes more transnational, and electronics allow us to communicate across international borders. There has never been a time in which speaking a second language has been more important. The foreign language department offers both French and Spanish classes from intro to AP.
Students participate in project-based learning and use technology to help them learn grammar and explore lands where their chosen language is spoken. Upwell of courses offer full immersion, allowing students to practice and use skills in real-life situations. If all of the above is a bit overwhelming, don't worry, the RHS Guidance Department is here to help.
Assist in course selection, guide you through the college selection and admissions process, and even provide a shoulder to cry on, or help a hand when life seems a bit overwhelming.
In fact, you will find that kind of support from the entire faculty and staff of Rockland High. They're here for you. Come and take a look, you'll like what you see.
Outstanding, very well done.
I thought it was worth, worth the time.
Sure, I think they did a great job, and...
Without you telling us, it was student-created, one would have thought it might have been professionally created, I think it was really well done.
Mr. Murphy has a lot, deserves a lot of the credit, I think, when we hire faculty and staff, they set the bar, and Mr. Murphy is outstanding, so I think the products are outstanding, so...
We're going to hear that, I would hope, on cable, and Dave, I mean, that was, I thought, very professionally done, it was great, I almost want to take a PG course, you know?
It reminded me of something you'd see on Chronicle. Like, it was very, very well done.
It's available on the website, Dr. Cron has it on the school site, you can play it through our own... Television station playback, so we're dispersing it as widely as, excuse me, as we can.
I shared it on my Facebook page.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Be nice to maybe display that when the Arts Festival comes around somewhere, so that people could perhaps view that, I don't know whether that could be done, but maybe...
Set it up on a loop.
That's exactly what we'll do, thank you for the suggestion.
Yeah, I just get that out there, and let people see what's, I mean, so many people in the town, and there's nothing against this town, they'll drive by, the doors are shut, the lights are on, everything must be okay. You see something like that, and you really realize what's happening inside this building, and what these kids can avail themselves to, and what can be accomplished, and what is being done here, and that was impressive.
Thank you, it was a lot of hard work that the students put in, so I'll pass your regards along to them, thank you.
I was going to say, not only does it show their talent, but it's very apparent how proud they are to be here.
Yes.
And so, it's just fantastic to see.
Thank you.
Any one of our five schools could make a video like that, too. Any one of the five schools, you know, if I ever find myself getting a little tired, I'll just go down to one of these other schools, elementary, any of the schools, and spend some time in a classroom, and my energy meter gets filled right back up.
I know that you like to go to kindergarten, why?
I do like, it's my favorite grade, I'm sorry, but...
Good for you. He likes you.
I enjoyed kindergarten very much.
I wonder if you have considered, if it might be helpful to, as great as that thing was, I mean, how long was that?
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes, I wonder, have you considered the idea of having the same thing, but a shorter version as well, that might be able to hit on all the points that are covered within that seven minutes, but for folks with really short attention spans, like myself, who might be scrolling through a tweet on Twitter, or something on social media, that might be scaled back to something real quick, that somebody could, in their... to something real quick that somebody could, in their average day, be able to take in sort of the bullet points, the main idea of that?
Sure, we'll take a look at it. I want to emphasize the amount of time and effort that particular project took.
I'm sure. It was impressive, both in the project itself and in the content of it. I mean, I think it does a really good job of showing all the great things that are going on here.
It was a team effort, not just among the students, but among the faculty and department heads here at the high school, who provided the information that we incorporated into the presentation.
Outstanding. Great job.
I think, you know, another thought would be, I know you're gonna put it on the school page, but a link to it from the town page, because obviously, when people are looking at towns and looking where to move into, they're interested in the schools, and that would be a great little advertisement.
That'll be the second piece. A couple of my students, some of you may not know, did a project for Town Hall two years ago that was a presentation about the town overall, as opposed to the school department. So, we're keeping busy.
That's another really well-done piece.
Thank you.
Yeah, outstanding.
You have all these great ideas, don't we? Another thing, this came to remind me.
Maybe I should leave.
And another...
Notify the local relatives...
Right. I was just thinking the same thing.
Of the availability of this. So when people are coming, as the doctor said, and looking at the town and obviously looking at schools, bingo.
It's a great idea. Thank you.
Pass it out.
Great work.
Outstanding.
Good job.
And before we proceed on, just from your superintendent's report, I know that was the remainder of your superintendent's report. I just want to go back to a quick question about the building project. You mentioned that there was over twenty respondents so far, as far as the OPM search?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Now, to me, that sounds like a high number. That sounds incredible. But is that, do you find, is that high or low, or is that standard?
I've talked to the districts, and they do get high turnovers. I think it's a, you know...
It seems to me it's a lot higher than it was our last trip through this process.
Yeah, but that was brand-new, though.
Yeah, I hear you, but boy...
That is a good, that's a good amount.
We had the informational meeting and the tour, and twenty-plus companies sent representatives.
One thing, yeah, about the tour there, was there any reason why they didn't go down to the Esten? Looking at all the elementary schools?
Esten's not part of the project.
Yeah, no...
Elementary schools, we're talking, yeah.
They did, yeah, just...
Neither is the...
Esten's not going anywhere.
Expanding it to Memorial Park was something that we even checked on, because, again, right now, this is, as far as the MSBA is concerned, it's the Jefferson School Project. So, whenever we speak publicly, and they definitely have media trolling or whatever. So, I would, I think extending it to including Memorial Park was a little bit of a stretch, but they were very comfortable with that. I don't know if they would have wanted us to take them through Jefferson.
We could talk about that, because I was just thinking, because we're talking about elementary.
Right.
Yeah, the whole elementary package. Bringing that, because that's part of the feasibility.
There were a lot of questions about that.
Yeah, yeah. I would have that, though. Anyways, go ahead.
Anybody have anything else for Dr. Kron under the superintendent's report?
I'm excited to see that we have our first student heading towards the Global Ambassador Distinction Award.
Yeah.
That we talked about a couple of weeks ago. I think that's great to see that that was talked about, and now somebody, a sophomore, so somebody with plenty of time left, is jumping on it. I think that's, that's good. I think that's exciting. I liked that, that whole thing there.
Outstanding. All right, next up, item five under our agenda this evening. Under reports, we have monthly reports for January, and we have four reports we'll be looking for approval on. We have reports from the administrators, we have guidance, we have nurse, and we have pupil personnel services.
Four motions to approve.
We have four motions, and we have four seconds.
Four seconds.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. That's a vote.
Beautiful newsletters.
Yes, beautiful newsletters, which are becoming increasingly, increasingly colorful, first of all. Dr. Kron and I were remarking on that earlier. It's absolutely beautiful, and I'm sure that the ink, the ink use is going up quite a bit, but we do enjoy it. And it really gets your attention, and there's a lot of good stuff in these every, every single time we look at them. And they become, they seem to be becoming more sort of standardized between the three schools and their approach to them, so it's really helpful, and I really enjoy them. And for those of you that your kids are actually giving these to you when they come home out of their backpacks at the end of the day, take a look. There is, there's some really informative stuff and good stuff to know going on in our, in our schools. Any other comments about our newsletters? Okay. That being said, next on tonight's agenda, we have building rentals for January. For your information, you can see that our buildings are quite busy, and I know we had some discussion before tonight's meeting about this. Just as an item of note, we are going to be looking at reviewing just a little bit about our fee structure and how we take care of folks as far as our building rentals, particularly on youth programs in town here. But it's good to see our buildings being used. It's good to see beautiful facilities that our town has, that our community is able to embrace and take part and use our facilities. So, hopefully, they'll remain busy. Under Old Business, we have some completed fundraisers. We have three reporting back to us that were quite successful. The Rockland High School Music Boosters had a left-right center tournament that raised one thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars. The preschool PAC had a raffle ticket fundraiser that raised one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And the Rockland High School Service Learning Department raised seven hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents with a Hilliards chocolate sales. Outstanding work by everybody.
Lot of chocolate.
Lot of chocolate, absolutely, without a doubt. Next on tonight's agenda, preliminary budget reading for FY nineteen. This is a second reading. Dr. Kron?
Yeah, I'm asking that the school committee accept the proposed FY nineteen budget of twenty-seven million, sixty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much. Next up, under New Business, we have a request for approval of town meeting articles. Shall I go right ahead and read all the articles? I think I should. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to fund the replacement and upgrading of computers and any technology-related expenses, or take any action relative thereto? The next article will be, will the town raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars, I'm sorry, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars to fund the fourth year of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for two two thousand fifteen Ford Transit Special Education vans, and the third year of a five-year combined lease purchase for four two thousand sixteen Ford Transit Special Education vans, and the second year of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for one two thousand seventeen Ford Transit Wheelchair Accessible Special Education van, and one two thousand seventeen Ford Transit Special Education van, or take any action relative thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of thirty thousand, five hundred, ninety-two dollars to fund the purchase and installation of a walk-in combination cooler freezer for the cafeteria kitchen at the Esten School, or take any action relative thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of seven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to fund the third year of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a two thousand sixteen, fifteen-passenger multifunction school activity bus, or take any relative action thereto? Will the town raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of eleven thousand, twenty-six dollars to fund the second year of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a two thousand seventeen F-350 dump plow truck, or take any relative action thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to fund the repaving of the Esten School driveway and parking lots, or take any, or take any action relative thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of forty-two thousand dollars to fund the purchase of a new marked police vehicle with Town of Rockland specifications for the Rockland Public School Security Resource Officer, or take any action relative thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of twenty thousand dollars to fund the purchase of a ride-on-floor scrubber machine for the high school, or take any action relative thereto? Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds the sum of sixteen thousand dollars to fund the purchase of a night lockdown devices for classroom doors throughout the district, including Rockland Daycare and McKinley School, as security for an active shooter attack, or take any relative, any action relative thereto? And there's going to be WRPS account language to follow. Dr. Kron, anything you want to touch on, on any of these articles? And any comments, before any comments or questions are brought forth, maybe?
No, I want to, again, just thank the town, the Finance Committee and Town Hall for their annual support of many of these initiatives. The first, the first article that you read was the hundred thousand dollars for replacement, upgrading computer and technology. And this is very, very carefully used, obviously, each year, but it's allowed us to stay current and continue to expand and continue to put functioning, relevant technology in the hands of our kids on a regular basis. Other than that, they're fairly self-explanatory. But again, the town has been very generous in helping support the leases and for some of our special education transportation needs, and we are very grateful for that. Colleen, do you have anything?
I don't.
Nine motions for the nine articles.
Mr. Phelps has a comment?
No, I just wanted to suggest that I know for most people that are watching, it's the first time they've heard anything about these articles, and there may be questions about any or all of them, and I would suggest that they could contact any one of us on the school committee, or obviously, the superintendent's office, to get any, any questions answered as to why these different things are needed and, you know, exactly what the money's going to be used for. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
And that was second term's motion.
So we have nine motions in nine seconds. All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on tonight's agenda is the request for approval of fundraisers. We have one request for fundraiser. It's a volleyball serv-a-thon that is going to be held in March. Dr. Kron, your recommendation?
I recommend we approve the serv-a-thon.
Okay. Any questions from the committee?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor? Thank you very much. That's a vote. Request for approval of adjustments with school budgets. Dr. Kron?
Yep, I'm gonna turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Forlizzi, but this is adjustment, so for the folks at home, we vote a budget, money goes into certain line items. Sometimes you spend more in one line item than another, and you make adjustments throughout. So this is just moving money from one account to another account. It's not appropriating new money, it's moving money from account to account.
Absolutely, yes. It doesn't change our bottom line, it's just moving something. For example, if we have not spent too much in the maintenance account, do we change it to custodial or whatever? It's just changing from one line item to another.
Motion to approve.
Calling one question.
Yes, go ahead.
There's one item on the second page. It's a, it's a fairly large item, and I just wondered what those two account numbers were, the one hundred and five thousand?
The one hundred and five thousand, I will go back and check that, but I believe it's separation benefits that I'm taking from that item and putting it into maintenance.
Okay, all right. I just, I'm curious.
I can verify, I can verify the rule.
The rest of them, I mean, are people that, you know, don't see, they're relatively small, but that was a larger one.
Yep, will do.
The question I have, I mean, I look at this report, you know, it has numbers, you know, is there, I don't know if there's any way of actually putting the general ledger information...
Well, this goes with that general ledger, the full general ledger, that from last meeting, and we forgot to include it, so we couldn't vote on it, but it was attached to that before.
Oh, okay.
So, we could, we could go back and...
Okay, because it's just, it's good numbers.
It will come along with the budget from now on.
Okay, good, thank you. Now, second term's motion.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you.
And just to piggyback on something Mr. Phelps mentioned before, with the town articles or adjustments to school budget, or, you know, different accounts, if anyone ever, ever, ever has a question about anything, this is your school district. It's paid for by the taxpayers. Our books are wide open. You're more than welcome to come down. We will show you what we're spending, on what, and we will gladly take people's suggestions if they have ideas for savings. One example, when we were asking for a town article to purchase vans, I will tell you that the reason that we are purchasing vans is because the cost of outsourcing transportation has grown so, so high that Ms. Forlizzi has been taking it upon herself to take initiative to shift those costs in-house, because it's less expensive for us to rent the vans or buy the vans, hire a driver, than it is to outsource that work, so...
Just to explain on that, when I started in the district, we had six special education vans, we're now at ten. So we've been able to bring a lot of that outsourcing back to our district to save money.
To save money.
And save a lot of money.
A lot of money.
About how much money does that save?
I can get you that information. I mean, it's, it's well up into the thousands and thousands.
Plus, I would think, a lot more control over how these vans, I mean, when you sub the work out, you never know for sure that everyone's had all the background checks and everything else. Whereas here, we have our own drivers, our own equipment, so we know that it's maintained. All of that for the safety of the kids, our kids, that we're transporting. So, to me, it's a win-win.
And if we have a route that may cost ninety dollars a day, we think about that, we're bringing it to one of our own drivers that we're paying a salary to when we own the van. So, that's the cost savings.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, mistakes? Okay, very good. Next up on tonight's agenda, we have a request for approval of new physical restraint prevention and behavior support procedures, and this is a first reading. Dr. Kron?
Just what I wanted to make sure of, there are very, very, there's very little change between here, in fact, in this particular copy that I'm looking at, I can't even point them out to you, but I wanted to make sure that our restraint policy was absolutely up-to-date. So I just had it checked by our special education attorney, and Linda Minigley, our Director of Student Services, had it checked, just to make sure that we are up-to-date with, with the most recent physical restraint prevention policies. And then, with the approval of the school committee, it will then be updated. But I can tell you that the change in language was so minimal, literally changing of, adding of one word or reducing another word, but I just wanted to make sure that it was very current, because unfortunately, physical restraint, especially at the elementary school, with increasing of social, emotional, and I'm talking in our sub-separate programs, not in our, the majority of our classrooms, but it's very, very important to us from a liability standpoint and also student safety standpoint, that these policies and procedures are up-to-date.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this, for, well, for reasons, I think we normally would table something like this.
Sure.
But the second reason is that if the public has any question about this, this policy, there's a lot to it, it's very carefully written. Again, protection of our kids is primary all through the thing as you read it, but if anyone had any question, obviously, anyone can come and get a copy of it.
Absolutely.
So I would...
Was this been shared with our CPAC as well?
I'm not sure, but we can definitely make a point of doing that.
I think so. I think that would be a good communication to have with them.
Second motion to table.
Okay.
What sort of training do the teachers get with this policy?
So, so there's, there's, the basic level is that you're, the law requires you have two people in each building who are CPI, Crisis Prevention Institute. It's a national organization. It, through that, through this training, it allows, it's really a liability issue, so you're supposed to have people trained. In addition to having two people in your building who are trained, any teacher whose job puts them in a situation where they may be much more apt. So, our alternative program, for example, those, those folks are definitely trained. They, they receive a twelve-hour training initially, and then they have to retrain the following year. So, in each of our buildings, we have crisis teams, but within each building, we also have many other people who are trained. I used to be a trainer, so I sort of know the process from, from soup to nuts, and it's quite a task just keeping track of who's trained and who isn't trained. I will tell you, though, in all honesty, the restraint training and the different holds that are taught, it's not, if it isn't something that you're using on a daily basis, the basic rule is, you know, from middle school on up, right, to even eighth grade on up, we don't restrain kids. That means, if someone wants to run out of the building at the high school level, unless they're going to run out into a busy street, we open the door, you know? And restrain at the elementary level, it's, you have to do it very, very carefully, and again, and it's primarily happening in our behavioral programs. So, I guess, it's, I'm glad that we do it, but the fact is, if you're not practicing this stuff on a regular basis, some of these holds and these, these things that you learn in this training, they're just too complex. So the majority, it's common sense, it's teaching people that restraint is not just a hold, but keeping someone from being able to leave a room, blocking access to a doorway, that's restraining someone. So, in addition to the actual training that goes on at the beginning of the year when we do teacher induction and we have our opening work, we speak extensively about our policy, and that's a mandate by the state. So we comply with the law, but I will tell you that... a mandate by the state. So, we, we comply with the law, but I will tell you that it's, it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of emotional stress, I think, for the teachers that are doing this work. And so, we could do more, but it's just, it's not something that we're doing on a daily basis.
Well, it's good that you're not having to implement it on a daily basis.
Yeah, but I think at the elementary level, it's, it's happening more than, than you would think, and, you know, teachers getting kicked or bit is not a, not, not unheard of, you know?
I know at the, first, the orientation at the beginning of every school year, there's quite a bit of time spent on this, so that at least initially, even the new teachers are informed as to what's right, what's wrong.
Right.
And, and they find out soon after that, if not then, who the people in their building are the ones that are trained specifically for this.
Correct.
A lot of time, as you say, is spent on this.
Yeah.
Well, it's a very, obviously, a very, very sensitive topic, and one we should take very seriously, and obviously we do. So, I'm glad to see it's being kept up to date, and we're reviewing it, and as a committee, I'm glad that we're going to have a week to table it and to further review it and talk about it, to make sure we get this thing right for all our, all our kids that are indeed in our schools. So, that being said, we've got a motion on the table and a second to table this until our next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda, we have a request for approval for fundraisers?
We did that.
We did that. Yeah, we sure did.
Okay, goodbye. Wake me up when it's over.
In fact, I think you made the motion.
I did, I did.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to go there.
Tom made a motion.
No, no, not me. Request for approval of out-of-country field trip going to Quebec City, Canada. Dr. Cron?
Yes, we are, we are inviting...
Julie.
Ms. Brooks.
I didn't know Mr. Harrison was coming, too.
Hi, Julie.
Hi, thanks for having me.
So, tell us about the trip.
Um, so, the proposal I have out there is for a four-day trip up to Quebec City that goes up during the winter carnival celebration, which takes place over a three-week period at the end of January into early February. And in my previous district of Carver, I'd taken the trip, I had myself had traveled on it probably four times, but I had planned it five, and one of the years I was pregnant and didn't go. But I've gone up with students anywhere from, say, 16 students up to 40 students, and it's been a wonderful celebration and a great exposure for students, even from the French one level, to really get into an immersive environment and see that what I'm teaching in them in the classroom really is valid, and they really can use it in the real world, and to see their confidence level once they're there and they've used it, they come out of a store and say, "I just spoke to them in French, and they answered me, and I understood, and I paid," is always very fulfilling for the teacher to see that. But the kids go on, and this is one of their best memories, I would say, from some of their high school times. As we know, travel is just such a wonderful thing we can provide to our students, and I think Rockland does a great job of, I've seen so many opportunities just in the short time that I've been here. So, I'm hoping that I could plan something that's a little bit closer to home, and it's a four-day program, and for students that are, are enrolled in the French program. And the details are in there, but I can, I can go through the itinerary. I can take any of your questions, whatever it is you want to know. There's some educational...
Thank you for your work to organize this trip. Seems like a great trip. It's exciting. And I know we do have some questions from the committee and some comments from the committee, so start there.
Yeah, I love, I love Quebec. I mean, and you go up there, like you say, and they kind of, not force you, but they want you to use their language. I've been in that situation, some of that. The only, the only thing is, and it's, it's great, do you go in Old, yeah, Quebec City, Old Quebec, right?
We do, yes. So, we don't actually, we just kind of go right by Montreal. It's right up to Quebec City.
Absolutely. It's, it's a great place. The only thing is that, and what, if it's possible, not if it's possible, what we'd like to do is, because this is out of country, we like to, I would like to have the, the travel agency, the people that you use, come in and just talk to us about what processes and procedures they have.
Certainly.
In case, in case there's some, any type of emergency that goes on up there.
They're local. They are right, right at Park Street in Boston, so.
Explorica Tours, they're called, correct?
They are, yeah. We, they were founded, when I worked in student travel, actually, they were founded out of some people that worked for EF Tours, and they, some of the upper management had some great ideas and some new ways of doing things, and they felt that their ideas weren't being heard, so they started their own tour company in 2000.
Oh, good.
And then they've quickly become a leader. They were bought out by World Strides, not bought out, but they acquired, I guess, by the World Strides family, which is a huge student travel company as well. So, I could definitely talk to my representative there, and I could arrange maybe for another meeting.
Yeah, that would be great.
To have someone come out.
In the past, when we've had foreign travel trips, it's been with EF, they've, they've had a representative come in, and they've been, it's been really helpful to us as a committee to be able to hear about the exciting trip, first of all, and to get excited along with all the kids that are going. But also, I think, for parents and our community to be able to have a face to the organization that we're entrusting our kids to.
Sure.
To be able to answer our concerns and the questions about safety and preparedness and itinerary contingencies should, you know, an emergency happen, things like that.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, if we could get them here and get them set up for one of our meetings, that would be outstanding before this committee ends up approving it, just for it to have that step. So, I think what Mr. Mills is suggesting, and I don't mean to, to go there, that we've tabled this for this meeting, and maybe...
No, I will talk. I was just, because I want to, can I sign up for this?
Because it's you, Mr. Mills.
I love Quebec. I love Canada.
Should we have a motion to table this for this meeting?
Motion to table.
We do. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great opportunity.
Yeah, it really is. Really is, absolutely. It's great to have our French program back in our schools, and having it go on so well, and be able to have kids be able to travel and experience the culture of it as well.
Well, probably no better way to get them interested in the program, than to have opportunities like this.
Absolutely, absolutely, without a doubt. Good stuff. Last but certainly not least on our agenda is our public service announcements, and as always, ladies first. So, we'll start with our student representative, Ms. Macy Jones.
Um, well, seniors are slowly winding their time down at Rockland High. We're actually going to be selling graduation gowns pretty soon.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
What day, what day?
Um, June 1st.
I know she knows.
Then it's over.
That's about all I got.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Dr. Small?
Um, so I will just speak my normal truths. This year so far, the CDC has reported 53 pediatric deaths in response to influenza. So, again, I will remind people that flu is real. Flu is dangerous. The best way to prevent deaths from flu is from the flu shot. Eighty-five percent of the pediatric deaths were in unvaccinated patients. So, the flu shot may not be 100% match. It may not prevent you from getting the flu. It does a really good job in preventing you from the complications of the flu or dying from flu, which is ultimately what we all need. And if people have questions, please don't get on Google. Call your doctor. That's what they're there for. That's what they went to school for. That's what they've trained for. It's their job to keep up with the current literature. They know more than Dr. Google. And along those lines, I would just say that we all know that it's a really germy time of year, so please be kind to your kids' schools. Send in Purell, send in tissues, Clorox, Lysol wipes, all that stuff, so that we can keep our kids healthy and going to school and learning.
Thank you very much. Mr. Phelps?
Couple of things. The school project was mentioned, and it's in its infancy. If people have questions, don't hesitate to look again at one of us or the superintendent's office to get the questions answered. We don't have all the answers as yet. There are a lot of big things that haven't been decided yet, but yet we do know something of what's happening, and, and so, don't hesitate. And secondly, I can't help but think that now Rockland is going to be, I mean, somewhat, are having a reputation such as the New England Patriots, that everyone in the area is going to hate us because we win all the time. Two basketball teams either share or won the South Shore League championship. The hockey team has won the South Shore League championship. I think the wrestling team, I'm not sure, but I know if they haven't won it, they're right there. It's been another great winter season for high school sports. Did they win, Dr.?
Second place.
Second. I'll take second place. I'll take second place. These kids are...
We get three injuries, not to make excuses.
All right. But these kids, again, performed so well. There's still a little bit left in the basketball season. The hockey season will be going into playoffs because they've all qualified for that. Again, I hope that the surrounding towns don't hate us too much, but we'd rather win than lose.
They can hate us. That's okay.
That's right.
Mr. Mills?
Happy Valentine's Day, and vacation starts on Friday afternoon for a week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does indeed.
That's enough.
Mr. Groppler?
Oh, that was it?
That was it. I told you I'm not going to talk to anybody.
Caught me off guard. I can talk. No, no, here, please. Yes, vacation, let's be safe, let's be smart. Enjoy the ski slopes, enjoy the longer weather if you go down south. Who knew that Facebook and Google didn't have the answers to everything, right?
Who knew?
I mean, seriously. But no, all in all, can't believe the school year is already this far gone. So, with that, I say happy Valentine's Day and have a good vacation.
Thank you very much. So, there hasn't been a lot that hasn't been said already, except for I'd like to wish a very shortly belated birthday to Dr. Small yesterday?
Thank you. Saturday.
Saturday. Well, happy birthday. I hope it was a good one.
Thank you. Yeah, 27 all over again.
27 all over again. That's it.
All over again.
That's it. Well, that's all I've got for tonight. Wonderful meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. With that, the last order of business tonight would be to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a vote. Thank you very much, and have a great night.